We do have, and I thank Speaker Trelawney for being here, Vice Speaker Tina Rose Muenheimer for being here, Senator Dwayne Snodgrass, Senator Tom Fisher. I also saw Senator Barnett is here and Senator LaHawn is here, but we don't have a quorum. And two steps time we get a quorum then we will continue on recess. Thank you.
Committee of the Hall is called to order, we have a quorum. Yesterday, we ended with Senator Tello, and she brought a point of concern, to make sure that the Shippo is here, the Shippo is here. Mr. Bora from the Department of Land Management is on his way. But with that, we will continue on, any senators not here will be bypassed and lost and forgotten. Senator Dwayne, you're up, do you have any questions for the panel or any comments to be made? You have five minutes, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, good morning, the people of Guam, and good morning, panel.
Oh, excuse me, Senator Dwayne, I know that the Speaker has a point of information to add, an email that she provided, if you can make that move first, then we can settle that, because it's already been passed, and then we'll come back to you, Senator Dwayne. Standby, well, she has to address that first. Madam Speaker, if you can, ask motion to be added.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to add to the record email from Andrew LaGuatia dated November 9, 2020, to me. It discusses the acreage that he used to design the Naftan Shrine, and it says that he used four acres, by the way, the law says up to five acres, but he only had used four, including a buffer zone, he says in his letter. And I'm entering this in because of the testimony that we heard yesterday, that somehow using Andy LaGuatia's name, that we need now fourteen acres to build this, when he had designed it very clearly to fit within four acres. Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you, are there any objections? If not, we'll just add that to the journal, so it's included. Thank you. Senator Dwayne, you have five minutes, sir, for any comments or questions.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and again, thank you for the panel for being here. I wanted to get down, there was a lot of stuff that was discussed yesterday, I was I was listening to the discussion, and it seems that five acres, and now fourteen acres, but I want to have some clarity, and if there's anyone from the first of all, I want to thank Mr. Melvin Wampet, he and I shared a time together at Southern High, and all of a sudden, he disappeared to be to run one of those departments, and, sir, I'd like to thank you for your work and your efforts in preserving our culture. And even you there, Mr. Shippo, Sir Luhon, thank you for that too, as well. Is the panel under oath, Mr. Chair?
Yes, they are, all of them are under oath. There's only one person missing, Department of Land Management Director, Joe Bora.
Yes, sir, thank you, thank you so much, okay, so, according to I'm not sure, I'm trying to ask the question, is the fourteen acres, have it already been subdivided, and is there a deed for this property specifically, and put aside for this endeavor?
Okay, we have the Chamor Land Trust Acting Director comment to that, maybe he can answer that, because that's all Chamor Land Trust property to begin with.
So, is there a deed, is there a deed, or, I don't know how this works with the government, but has this been portioned out, and and a map for this project been provided or developed, and all these properties have been grouped together for this project already?
Correct, Senator, there is a map that has been prepared, but there's no deed transferring the property.
Oh, okay, and so then, effectively, it will stay, it will remain in the Chamor Land Trust with the shrine, and is that how it works?
Based on the law, the jurisdiction will stay with the Chamor Land Trust, but it will be reserved for the function of the shrine.
Oh, okay, so the land is still a part of the Chamor Land Trust inventory?
Correct.
Just set aside for the Naftan?
Correct.
So it really doesn't matter whether it's five or fourteen, it still remains there? Right? Is that correct?
It would remain under the inventory of CLTC, correct.
Oh, okay, and should, you know, anything come up in the future? Should we decide whether we wanted to use a portion of that property, it could still be available for future use, couldn't it? By the stroke of a pen or law?
With an amendment to the law, yes, correct.
Oh, okay, thank you, are you familiar with how how it evolved from five acres to fourteen acres?
If I may defer that question to Mr. Joe Bora.
Yes, sir, and Mr. Bora is still under oath, yes, sir?
That's correct, he's under oath.
Yes, thank you, sir, I take that in, that's a very important fact, I want to ask Mr. Bora, sir, how did it go from five to fourteen acres, if you can illustrate for me how that was possible?
It's kind of hard, Senator, to illustrate, the screen is so far away, but let me give you the narrative of how it came about. In October 2020, the architect, LaGuatia and Associates, I believe, or LaGuatia Architects, they had finished their conceptual drawing of the site, and and he came back and he said, "I can't put a buffer strip on it, I can't put a buffer zone, because I've used up the five acres for the facility." And at that point, Shippo and representatives of the architectural firm came to land management and said, you know, "Can you help us with this?" And having been a part of the drafting of the bill and the committee report in the, I guess, the Thirty-Third Legislature, I had a little bit familiarity with the committee report and what was said at the public hearing. And in it, you know, the intent was also to give the architect, as well as the surveyor, some sort of discretion to adjust the land area, because I had heard, and Melvin is here, and confirm it or not, that there were two thousand remains. Now, we didn't know whether those two thousand remains were full body, full skeletons, or were they partial, you know, knee bone here, a hand here, or a skull, you know, so I didn't know that, and so I don't think that the custodian of the remains really had an idea of the total acreage needed for the Naftan Marinaata. But just to give you maybe an example of a cemetery, and this is not a cemetery, this is a shrine. It's not, it's one step above a cemetery, but go look at Tokja Cemetery, where there's no buffer zone. You'll be kneeling at the grave of your ancestor there, and somebody coming late for the mass will pass right behind you, and sometimes the radio's on, so, you know, there's no dignity or serenity in that situation. Even the new cemeteries, maybe not the new cemeteries, because I haven't buried anybody there, but let's say the cemetery in Ledzang, there's really no buffer zone, if you're having a mass, and you have four family members, and you go there to attend the mass besides the grave of the family, you'll probably be putting your chair in the next grave, you know, to the side, there's no buffer zone, it's a zero setback, so to speak, in that area. So, the architect and Shippo came to land management and said, you know, "Can you help us with this?" And surveyor and I sit down, the chief surveyor, the Guam Chief Surveyor, and say, "Can we do this within the confines of the law?" And he said, "Yes," and I said, "Yes," and I actually ordered him to do it, not to finagle any technical stuff in there, you know, but, you know, can the survey be done? And he replied, "Yes," so I said, you know, "For your protection, I order you to conduct the survey," or review the survey map at that point. But then I looked over to Pat, and Shippo says, "We got a slight problem in the architect doing the survey. They're out of money, so can land management do it?" And Pat is here, I don't know if he can confirm that or not, but that was one of the reasons why they came down. Normally, land management reviews a map, you know, land management probably reviewed all your maps of all the properties that you have, maybe not this particular surveyor, but we have that responsibility, we have that mandate, to review and approve maps technically correct, you know, and what I mean by technically correct is if there's a structure on the property, you put that on the map. If there's an encroachment on the property, on any property, you put that on the map, that makes the map technically correct. Now, that doesn't mean that land management says, "Oh, yeah, that encroachment should be there," that's not, that's not our call, you know, it's what they call an assbill map. And there's different maps, there's probate maps, land registration maps, parceling maps, parental subdivision map, probably a few more that I don't know at this point, but so that's how the property enlarged, and so what did you enlarge it to? If you look at the map that, I think it was Senator Tello that put it up on the wall there, if you look at that map, you see that the surveyor, or their surveyor, and the architect actually put the facility as close as possible to the cliff line. And I never actually saw those other portions that were on the website, and I'm glad I had time to read it right now, last night, but, you know, so this is what came out, this is five acres, that's shape, that is five acres. It's really not an ideal shape, most people like their lots nice and square, everything level on it, you know, like that. But the obligation of the architect, the surveyor, is to develop his conceptual plan, and then they go into the A and E. A and E is architectural and engineering. The architect's part is to develop, you know, show a design, this is what it looks like. The engineer's part is, okay, you want a two-story building there, okay, this is what it takes to do that, you know. So you really don't do your architectural and engineering plans until you find out your topography, your boundaries, you know, and like that, and I'm very glad that Senator Dwayne was sitting in front of me here, because that's exactly the question you have, when do you develop your A and E plans? And the other issue about putting this map up, or enlarging the land so that you would make it seem like, I think Senator Parkinson brought that up yesterday, that this is going to kill the hospital. You know, that's, this map enlargement, or parcel enlargement, that was 2020, even before, I believe even before this issue came up with putting a hospital over there, you know, so so we planned, you know, for that, and not knowing that later on, you know, senators and certain people wanted the hospital built there, and, you know, when you do a map, it's not like you talk to any surveyor, you know, they'll probably say, "Oh, man, it takes a long time to get a map approved at land management," you know, like that. I kind of differ with that opinion most of the time, but, you know, it's not that you can do a map probably six months, maybe, might be the fastest if everything's okay with the property, you know, like that. So, when they came to us, the surveyor and the architect and representatives of the architectural firm, they said, "We can't put in a buffer zone." Why is the buffer zone important? Because if you're going to build anything at Epo Point, whether it be a seven-star hotel, or or a hospital or like that, you actually kind of like take advantage of the frontage. You want to make the front of your building facing the road. What do you put in the back? Your delivery, your trash bins, your noisy air conditioners, big air conditioners for however big the facility is.
Point of information, Mr. Chair, this is a cliff line property we're talking about.
Yes, it is, I hardly agree, thank you for pointing that out. So you would put it in the back, just for, if nothing else, for aesthetic value, that you would put it in there. Behind that facility, whatever you build, would be the Naftan Marinaata, and if you look at the if you look at the
Maybe, Mr. Bora, we can get the audio folks to put that map up on the screen?
If you look at the website thing that was put on the website, you will see that the facility on this five-acre portion is right next to the property line, or the line, actually, for the five acres, you know. So he couldn't move, the architect couldn't move it to the north, because he's got the cliff line in front of it, and you can see that in his conceptual drawing. You can see that in his conceptual drawing. In some of the conceptual drawing, you see lines in front of it, they're kind of squiggly, those are topo lines. Those are topo lines, that shows that the front, where the two statues, Chief Aguarin and Chief Matapang, were looking down, they're actually looking down at the slope, and even the architect says, I think in one of these things, he says, "Hilton Hotel below." Now, it being below, that's a natural buffer zone, because it's below, and because it's you know, so it doesn't block the view and like that, so that's kind of like a buffer zone in that portion of the property. On the back of the property, the facility is right abouting the five-acre lot. Now, why did the architect make it that shape? Because he was trying to keep it within five acres, but the law also mandated that the Because he was trying to keep it within five acres, but the law also mandated that the facility, the parcel, be connected to the rock. Now, one of the senators yesterday, what's the importance of the rock? You know, even with the, even on the surveyor's thing, he says something like, "The rock anchors." The, if you read the website thing, it says, "The rock anchors the Naftan Manaynata shrine." You know, not only is he required by law to make it, but in his design, and you know, the, he doesn't use the word, "It's next to the rock, it's next to the shrine," he actually uses anchor. You know, that, that to me is, you know, is an important word that, that he used. So they came to land management, the architects and Shippo, and said, you know, can you help us out with this? And they're, well, you know, tell your, tell your surveyor, the architect's surveyor, which I believe he had on contract. It wasn't a land management surveyor to begin with, it was actually a private surveyor contracted to the architectural firm to decide that. And you can see in the, I don't know if it's the first page, but you see these numbers here on the side, they're not lines, but they're elevation numbers that shows how far it is from a sea level and like that. So surveyor, the architect came and says, you know, I tried to put it in five acres, but I don't have room for a buffer zone. And the buffer zone is very, very important to a facility like this. If you're doing a commercial development or commercial property in Tamuning or Ganya, buffer zones are not really that important, you're allowed to do that, you know, commercially. But the architect also knew that surrounding that parcel is Chamorland property that were actually, that was actually zoned designated by the legislature to be commercial use. On the south side, which is the, the Second Katura, the legislature also required the Chamorland Trust and the group that was there, the nonprofit group, the Chamor nonprofit group, to enter into a commercial lease. I'm not a value person, but I really don't know what the amount is of a commercial lease down in two months. You know, so I'm not concerned at that point, you know, what is the value of that? Although in the committee report in the 33rd legislature, the director of the Chamorland Trust picked that figure that the property being used for the Naftan Manaynata is something like 5.4 million, you know, on that. But you know, I spoke to a former governor and he says, you know, Joe, normally in planning, you do highest and best use. And when you say highest and best use, you kind of like equate it to dollars and like that, but in this case, highest and best use is not measured in dollars, it's measured in culture and it's measured in respect for your ancestors.
Yes, sir.
So, so that's why, you know, we, I went ahead and I am responsible for the land grabbing.
Oh, okay, yes, sir.
I pay duty to that, you know?
I was going to get to your land grabbing.
I, I was the one, Senator, that ordered the chief surveyor to survey that.
At the time, did you have any inkling that there may be a proposed hospital up there when you land grabbed?
No, Senator, the inkling that I had was a seven-story hotel with about 300 units of condominiums that were to be marketed to a certain country. They even put in the dollar amounts of what the Chamorland Trust would be getting out of that, I think it was $270 million.
So what you did when you land grabbed was you, you saved us from that and allow for it to be kept in the inventory, whatever excess land from the five.
Senator, you know, save yourself.
Point of information, Mr. Chair, the point of information, Mr. Chair.
So you preserved that. Basically what you did, excuse me, Mr. Chair, basically what you did was you, you...
Mr. Chair, there's a point of information on the floor. Senator Seniklis should know the law and allow the point of information.
Senator Telo, stand by.
Order, order.
Place yourself in order.
I'd like to get the answer from the gentleman.
Hold on, you'll get an answer. Point of information, do you want to speak, speaker?
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Stand by.
The director just testified that he had set this land aside since 2020 or before any talks about the hospital, but yesterday he showed us the map with his signature on, and they didn't do this until 2024. It was just...
Yeah, it takes a while to prepare a map, you know?
Yeah, four years.
Yeah, I mean, thank you for your point of information.
Mr. Chair, may I continue?
Yes, you may continue.
Sir, could you please answer the question?
I kind of forgot the question, Senator.
Basically what you did by...
To save the property.
By being a great leader, right, being a, being a leader, what you did was you, in a sense, you saved that property for the Chamorland Trust and in Naftan Manaynata. Is that what you did?
I would take the second one was that saved it for the Naftan Manaynata.
Amen.
That was in 1992. I didn't save it for the Land Trust because the Land Trust already had their marching orders, which was commercial lease.
Got it, sir. I, you know, I just want some clarity here and some honesty and some, you know, this is a very important endeavor, what we're trying to do. And it's very important for me, esta de machao y tempo, that we had these, these, these bodies been disinterred, you know? And it's a matter of some type of urgency for me. It's, it's more of a spiritual, it's more of a, something that has to do with dignity, and we need to restore it as soon as possible. And I'd like to thank your good work for, for doing that and, and trying to allow for more property for in Naftan Manaynata. You know, I, I had a professor in college, you know, he says, you know, if you gave some effort and you, you know, I'm going to help you out. And it seems that the effort that was being made is trying to make sure that the public is safe, do everything that is proper according to the topography, thank goodness for army map reading, I can understand the squiggly lines. But I think every effort was done honestly and fairly, and I think it benefits in Naftan Manaynata. And I don't know what's the big issue here, let's just move on to funding. And so thank you, gentlemen, for your testimony today, and let's wrap this up somehow.
Senator, if I could add something, if you read the committee report back in the 33rd legislature, the Chamorland Trust, without deliberation and only through the director at that time of the Chamorland Trust, recommended that the Naftan Manaynata was to be put over there near Route 15, near the Hawaiian Rock Quarry. Come on, Senator, you want to move the Naftan Manaynata over there to, next to a quarry?
No, sir, I wouldn't want that.
And you know what? The governor at that time went against his director's recommendation and signed the law for Ipau Point.
Sir, what, Governor, who was the governor back then?
Governor Calvo.
Okay, so he, he recognized also the solemnity and the dignity that needs to be upheld when, when building something like this.
He overruled his director's testimony at the legislature.
Yeah, thank you, sir. I, I just, I mean, it's very important for me that we, we move with, we move with some urgency on this, and I'd like to thank you for clarifying that for us all here because, you know, I know you were under oath yesterday and I didn't want you, it seemed like, you know, you were being questioned, like you're perjuring yourself here, and I think that's unfair, and I think, I think you needed to clarify that for us, and it's very important that, that you continue to do your good work there, and thank you for everything that you do. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Senator Seniklis. Senator Duñez, do you have any questions or comments for the panel?
Sisus Massey, Mr. Chairman, yes, I do. Pat, welcome back. Yesterday I asked questions, so, and it was, you know, deferred that you should be the one to answer this question. Pat, has the location of the A and E and the proposal for the shrine, has it changed location in any way on the recordation of the current map?
No, sir.
So earlier I heard a senator say that using the late, great Mr. Loguatia's architecture that may have been impugned in terms of what was designed, the design, the intent and the, and movement forward to build this is on the same footprint that the good architect prepared the A and E, correct, within the five acres?
That's correct.
Mr. Bora, when you came down to testify on Bill 185, the proposal for GMH to be built in Ipau Point, do you remember testifying to us that on that bill, was, was, did you see a map attached to that bill?
You know, Senator, not that I remember, not that I remember it was attached. Although in the previous legislatures, I worked in the legislature before, I kind of encouraged the senator I was working for that, anytime you have a bill concerning land, attach the map to it, you know, and approve map. But I, I don't remember if I saw one, Senator.
Mr. Bora, Joe Bora, did you even see a sketch?
You know, I, I don't remember, Senator. I do have a thick filing at the office, so I can look through that, but I don't remember if I see it, I saw it, because that's always been, I'm not a senator, but it's always been my contention that if you're going to introduce a land bill, then attach an approved map to it, you know?
Mr. Bora, can you encroach on a sketch?
You know, that's legally, can you legally encroach on a sketch? I was going to say, I think that calls for a legal determination, but not really because your boundary line is not set, you know, by law, by the surveyor and approval, so you, I don't think so, you know? I'm not a surveyor, I'm not an attorney, and, and that's why I said earlier, you know, that when a map comes in, even if a map, an approved map done by the surveyor, and I'm not talking about a sketch or a graphic, if it comes in and it shows that there's an encroachment on it, technically it's correct if there is, but that doesn't mean that the encroachment is legal, you know? It's just that, that's the survey protocol, you saw, you show everything on that map, the condition of the land. If there's an encroachment on it, yes, you do it, but can you encroach it on it? It doesn't make it legal just because there is an encroachment. As a matter of fact, that's usually the problem that we have with some of these maps coming in for approval, you know, the landowner says, can you take away the, I remember one case, return federal excess lands, Nimitz Hill, and the guy wanted to sell the property and he instructed his surveyor, the consultant, not to show the swimming pool, you know, and land management said, no, we know that there's a swimming pool on there and this map is not technically correct, you know? But can you encroach on a sketch? I don't think so unless it's the, the sketch was prepared by a surveyor and which actually asked him to, you know, go out and, and see that, but illegally, I, I can't answer that question, Senator.
When you drew and were concurred with CLTC or ancestral lands under this current map that we've been discussing, did you encroach on any designated property?
Not that I know, Senator, not that I know.
Mr. Chairman, since I have to ask you this direct question, since you're the jurisdiction of this bill, is there a map attached to this appropriation measure?
I wouldn't be able to comment at this time, I would have to take a look at it, the current bill, but I don't think there is because it's a very simple bill, it's just to fund five million for the shrine, that's all it's for, that's all this bill is.
Mr. Chairman, for the listening audience and for the folks, because this is not going to take that long, I'm going to read the bill. The bill is an act to appropriate $5 million from the fiscal year 2024 general fund revenues collected in excess of the adopted levels enumerated in public law 3742 as amended to the Department of Parks and Recreation for the purpose of constructing the Naftan Manaynata shrine. Being enacted by the people of Guam, section one appropriation, $5 million is appropriated from fiscal year 2024 general fund revenues collected in excess of the adopted levels enumerated in public law 3742 as amended. The Department of Parks and Recreation for the construction of Naftan Manaynata shrine, this appropriation shall remain available until fully expended and is not subject to Imaga Hagan Guahan's transfer authority. Section two, the only other section in this bill, effective date, this act shall be effective upon enactment. Mr. Chairman, I do not see any section in this bill that records a map, that attaches a map, that does anything that designates the location. That's already been done through the process of a prior public law that allowed, as Patrick Luhon on the record, under oath, said today, in the designated location that was prescribed by law for that purpose. This is an appropriation, Mr. Chairman, to carry out that mission.
Point of information, Mr. Chair, there's a, there's a big difference between what this bill we're discussing now and what the public law is. And in the process of discussing this bill, we found out that they have deviated from what the law actually allowed for the property lines of Naftan, and that, to me, changes the complexion of this whole discussion, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you for your point of information, but that's been expressed throughout the first and now the second round. Let's just keep being reminded, the bill is to fund the shrine.
A point of information, Mr. Chair, the bill's to fund the shrine as enshrined in the existing law, not to fund this deviation that we're finding out about now. That's, that's all I'm saying, is the black and white of it is to fund what was already passed by the previous legislature.
Senator Bernadette, I'm not debating you on that. Remember, I already expressed it, since the beginning of this bill, everybody talks about the land, and I keep reminding everybody, it's about funding the shrine. If you want to move the shrine to what was mentioned earlier, to maybe Maguino, then that's where it'll be funded. But today, the shrine is to be funded. Now, that's what Senator Duñez asked, that's what the bill's about, there's no map. Yes, you're right, there may be some deviation, you may, you may assume that and claim that, but to such thing, we're only talking about the appropriation. Now, if anybody wants to introduce an amendment to Bill...
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Hold on there, Madam Speaker, I'm speaking, I'm the chair, hold on. If anybody wants to make an amendment to public law 33, does 204, then do so, feel free, and then it'll go to the speakers committee. Other than that, you have a point of information, Madam Speaker, you wanted to state?
Just that if...
Okay, thank you. That's it, right?
I was just going to suggest that we, you change places if you want to testify on the bill.
No, no, I'm just making, he asked me a question, point of information. Senator Duñez, you have still a minute and 52 seconds, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Joe Bora, if there is, once again, do you concur that Mr. Patrick Luhon and yourself both agree that the architectural and engineering that was done for the Naftan Manaynata is on the location, prescribed location that was approved by law?
Yes, Senator, and how do I determine that? The law says that the parcel shall include the rock and the parcel shall be contiguous to the Second Katura and Chamor. In the committee report and the testimony of whatever that bill number, I believe it's 374, there was even discussion about making it east to west, north to east, you know, north to south, I'm not sure exactly what the directions that the historian at that time recommended that the facility, that the parcel be positioned in. Also during... Also during the discussion, in that committee report, since we're talking about the lot, there was discussion about enlarging the Naftan Maninata, but one of the people testifying said, no, do not enlarge it and give an out to developers developing property and they find human remains, ancestral remains, and then saying to the government, to Shippo, I found some ancestral remains of my property, here you go. So they didn't want to enlarge that. As a matter of fact, I believe Shippo can confirm this or not, it's limited who can be buried there, interred there, it's not just any remains. And then from that law, that discussion, came the bury on site. You find the remains in Hagat, you bury in Hagat, you find the remains in Pago Bay, you bury it in Pago Bay, you know, and there was a concern that you would have all these smaller Naftans on it, and you know, and also, you know, the buffer zone. Now, I don't know how many of you have not been to the Naftan that's already built. There is a Naftan Maninata already built. I'll give you a, you know, I I don't know if you guys have ever been there without a buffer zone, but I'll give you a hint of where it's at. At least 30 or 40 garbage trucks pass in front of it every day.
Point of inquiry, Mr. Chair, if he's talking about the reburial site on the, in Malolo?
If, if you can make clarity of words.
Yes, I am, Senator.
Okay.
And just for your further information, when the bill was being developed, Bill 374, not this bill, when the land bill was being developed, the senator that introduced that bill actually took staff out to see that Naftan Maninata.
Point of information, Mr. Chair, I think the Shippo can clarify for us, there are reburials in many locations on Guam, including Malolo, they reburied, I think from Ilik, is that correct? Let's say?
Okay.
Can you put on the microphone, please?
Turn on the mic, Pat.
Yeah, sorry, that, that monument was from the, the new landfill project, and so that was the reburial area, right along the road going to the new landfill.
There are reburials all over Guam?
There are.
Monuments?
Yes.
Shrines?
Yes, that's post 1989, so what we're talking about, there was an executive order that came out with Governor Ada in 1989 that pretty much made the divide of every findings forthcoming would have to be either with all intentions not removed, but if it had to be reburied to the closest possible location. So the remains that we're talking about for this particular project, majority of it is pre-1989 projects, most, you know, famously the Horn Bastel, but there's also that, that's why we have to have a proper inventory, because there, there might be some gray areas of post-1989 projects that will have to be placed into this national shrine.
Senator Duane, you got a minute and 26 seconds, sir.
Mr. Bora, you testified yesterday that 40% of the additional buffer zone is cliff line, can you reconfirm that?
You know, exactly no, but tabletop survey, just looking at it, you see that a large portion of the, now, what is large, is it 40%, is it 42%, but you can see on the graphic that the significant portion of the property that Chamorro Land Trust gave away is actually, you know, and, you know, and Senator Barnett had a very, very valid question on there is, you know, what is around the, you know, it's a 14 acre parcel, you take away five acres, and how much is left, nine acres, what is on that nine acres? What did Chamorro Land Trust give away? They gave away a rock that's not developable, and they gave away cliff line, as well as the, according to the law, a parcel that connects the rock to the Naftan Maninata and to the contiguous Sagan Katura and Chamorro, you know.
Bill Gates could probably develop that, but I don't think our government will. So we got about four acres left.
Actually, Senator, you know, I'm glad you brought that up, there was a developer that approached the Chamorro Land Trust, wanted to build his house there, I'll tell you the name after the session.
It would have been pretty excitable in my war. Anyway, so, okay, so we got four acres left. Mr. Bora, in the event that Bill 85, 185, actually, it'd have to be another bill, in the event that the original author actually went out and decided to prepare a map and design a map for, to support the building and constructing of a hospital on Ipau Point, and it was recorded, and there was a decision made that we would have to go and work with Naftan Maninata and, and, and deal with whatever the contiguous properties are, that would be a normal course of action, correct?
Yes, Senator, and that's already done. Surveying protocol is, if you have a piece of property and you want to carve out a X minus two acres of the property, let's say it's a 10 acre piece of property, and you want it to carve out two acres, you just don't go into the property and cut out two acres, you actually have to sever or survey the entire lot to make sure that the acreage or the square meters is consistent with what is on there, and then, only then can you cut out your two acres of that property. So it's not like you go in and you cut two acres, you actually have to survey the entire parcel and then take out your two acres that you want or whatever acreage you want. That map is already done, Senator.
Joey, as you said, this land is in your inventory, if there was legislation, you'd have to follow it if it became law, right?
Correct, Senator.
Mr. Chairman, I think we're clear, this is an appropriations matter, if there's any design build in the future, and I've talked to doctors on the phone, and I've let them know that if there is a contemplation and an actual map that supports Bill 185, if it were to pass into law or become law, that there is no problem with going in and drawing and ensuring that if the buffer zone were in fact to have encroached potentially on the footprint proposed, this legislature can deal with that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Duane. Senator Parkinson, do you have any question, comment for the panel, none? Senator Barnett?
Point of information, Mr. Chair.
Point of information, go for it.
Yes, thank you, I think I wanted to just share with our, our colleagues here, that the point of information is with regards to the acting director Joey signing on a map, a particular map, that he, he said that he signed it based on the law, and, and there is questionable if, if it is acting to the law, and he's already seek AG's opinion on whether his signature should have been on there based on the law, because the law says five acres, Mr. Chair, no more than five acres, no less than two acres, and right now he's waiting for the Attorney General's opinion on that, whether his signature was true to form or not, because it is questionable at this point. Thank you, Mr. Chair, just a point of information, so we are waiting for the Attorney General's opinion.
That, that would be a good one. Senator Parkinson, again?
Yeah, I'd like to yield my time to Speaker Terlahi.
You want to yield your time, okay. Senator Barnett?
I want to yield my time to Speaker Terlahi as well.
Only one, remember, can you?
Okay, fine, that's fine.
You can speak or you can skip?
Yeah, I just have a kind of a, a comment here. I think it would be unwise for us as a body to, to close our eyes to what's happening here, I mean, previous legislatures passed a law with respect to our ancestors, and we laid out in black and white what this law allowed for the Naftan Shrine, and clearly there's been, and it depends on what you take to heart, whether, how final that map is, but clearly there's been effort outside of the law to add more acreage to this shrine, and I think, you know, it's really for me just the latest in a litany of, of excuses that the administration has come out with. Unfortunately, to derail any effort to build a hospital at Oka Point, and we have heard it all, we've heard, oh, we can't build a hospital there because of the trash from the typhoon, we heard that there was little fire ants infestation, we heard it was too small, we heard there was fault lines, but out of the other side of our mouth, we're talking about leasing this property commercially. We heard that because of these fault lines, we wouldn't be able to get a loan to build a hospital. One of my favorites that we also heard, the salty air, I mean, they actually used the salty air as an excuse to not build the hospital at Oka Point, and if that's the case, then I say we evacuate everybody from the coastline of Guam because land of the salty air is going to kill us. And then they also said that we were going to jeopardize the operations of Sagan Katura Chamorro when, in fact, the Bill 185 would establish utilities for SKC, the Bill 185 would construct a new hospital in deference to the Naftan Shrine, so I just wanted to, to call this for what it is, and I, I really would want to caution my colleagues, if we are talking about, yes, an appropriations measure that is supposed to fund what the previous legislature passed in law, not some director's judgment called to deviate from the law and to say that he's doing this and he's doing that, when I think we're going to see on the record that the architect, his intent was to preserve the rest of this property for productive use. And so I don't think that it's prudent for us to go forward in discussing this appropriations measure, which is supposed to be tied to this original law, not this new map that's surfacing. With that, you know, Mr. Chair, I don't know if it's, if this is something we should send back to committee until we can figure this out, because I don't think that the appropriation of this bill is tied to this law anymore. I think that's clear from what we've seen on the record, from the variety of maps that we've seen, Mr. Chair, and I would just again caution my colleagues from further supporting this effort, unless, you know, we can go back to the original law, the original maps, the original intent of the architect, then I, I think we wouldn't have a problem here, because our lawmakers who came before us respected our ancestors, respected this effort, they passed this law. If we were to walk away from this committee of the whole, the respect for our ancestors and the shrine would still be in the law, we're not losing this shrine, we're not losing the ability to pay respect and tribute to our ancestors. What's happening is clear that we're muddying the water, and politics has now entered this whole discussion, and I think that's rather unfortunate, and you know, I don't know if that was, if the author of the, the bills knew about this new development with the maps, I'm hoping they didn't, because I think it's clear, if we're talking about funding this shrine as per the law that created it, then I think we've, we've gone off that path, Mr. Chair, so see to this, Masi.
Thank you, I think, before I go to the speaker, Pat, you wanted to say something?
I, I did, I just wanted, since the term, point of clarification is always used in this body, point of clarification, I just wanted to try that. The hospital has nothing to do with this project, it has never had anything to do with this project. When myself and Andy Leguanyan went to DLM, if you saw the map of the original five acres, you see how tight Mr. Leguanyan fit that, that shrine, and there was really no buffer zone off of that side. He complied with the law, as difficult as it is to fit five acres to touch the Sagan Katura and the rock, the engineering background that Mr. Leguanyan went through was a difficult one, we, we worked hard on that, even, even with my predecessor before I came back into the office. Now, the hospital has no, no issue at all with this project. It wasn't, it wasn't an issue when we discussed it, it's still not an issue right now, as we always, even though you guys argue about it, I always go back to Mr. Bora and I said, are we good? Is the hospital in any way, shape or form connected to this? And he says, no, this is totally separate, we never discussed it, it wasn't an issue when we, and, and it was Mr. Bora that says, you know, look how tight this, this is, and, and we look back at the law saying it does allow buffer zones. So now, instead of that squiggly line that goes like this, he went straight up, up the coast, just to give us some breathing space for it. And it is not a political issue, ladies and gentlemen, why are we making it a political issue? Let's get, do the right thing and give, put our ancestors back into the ground, they've been in boxes for over 100 years, come on!
Point of information, Mr. Chair.
Senator Barnett?
The laws on the books, the laws, the laws on the books for the shrine, and, and you know, Mr. Pat, I want to wish him a happy birthday, today is, is his birthday, so happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Point of inquiry, Mr. Chair, how many acres, Mr. Shippo, did you discuss with, how many acres was the, the Naftan designed on? What did you use in the design? You paid for architecture and design, how many acres?
If you want the accuracy, it's here, I have my staff bring it down here.
How many acres?
I don't know, let me, we can open it.
Oh my gosh, Mr. Chair, point of information.
Stand by, point of information with the speaker to, Pat, if you want, we can take a few minute recess, the law, Pat, open it up and take a look and then be able to answer that, okay? Okay? Let's take a short recess so that Mr. Pat Luan can open it as a point of information for the speaker. Thank you, we're on recess at this time. Committee of House, call back to order. We will now proceed to Speaker Theresa July. This is no time was yielded to you. Ma'am, you have 10 minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to go over, again, of course, we're here for an appropriation. The problem with the appropriation, I think, we all want to see this thing built. So when we're trying to get answers, what we're funding, we're finding out that the five acres that was supposed to be used for this project has now grown to 14 acres, I think, not according to the law, but we'll see. But I definitely know, there was no Tomorrow Land Trust Commission meeting approving, giving 14 acres versus five acres for this Naftan memorial. There was no law passed that says to give them 14 acres versus five acres. Is that correct, Joey? Mr. Cruz?
That's correct. The board was not informed.
Thank you. So, since 2016, the law's been on the books, that we're going to do this Naftan at that site on Epa Point. 2017, we passed the $100,000. I put an amendment into the budget so that we could fund the A&amp;E. In October 2020, this design was published by Mr. Andy, the late Andy Leguanyan, and it was designed to fit eight faults, crypts, and to fit all of the pre-1989 disinterred burials, which are over 2,000, maybe 3,000, according to our shippeau. The engineering was done. It, the engineering documents, our plans are dated September 2021. That includes structural by WB Flores, electrical, plumbing, all of it, September 2021. Mr. Leguanyan's original design fit into four acres. In November 2020, according to the Daily Post, our shippeau said, "Last year, we finally locked down the actual dimensions of the property with the Department of Land Management, and the design is essentially finished." That was in November 2020. So if we give this money, we should be able to go out on an RFP with the plans that we have. Is that correct, Patrick Luhann Shippeau? Do you intend to use these plans for your RFP?
Yes.
Do you intend to use the original location as designated by Mr. Leguanyan? You said yesterday in your testimony before this body that the size of the memorial can fit in two acres, but we gave five acres by law, or previous legislatures gave up to five acres by law. Andy Leguanyan said he only used four acres, and yet... Andy LaGuagna said he only used four acres, and yet we have assigned signatures that we were shown by the Director of Land Management, where he puts out a map in April 2024, which severs 14 acres. And the law authorizes him to sever the amounts out of this Chamor Land Trust inventory, out of this large lot, over for a NAFTA. And once you do that, they're no longer usable by the Chamor Land Trust for anything else except for the NAFTA. This is in April 2024, clearly at a time when full-on debate was very much known by every single one of these directors in front of us as to, and that we had already passed a bill to authorize the hospital to be built at Epa Point. And that's why it's important. Because it does look very much like we started off with the best intentions. Everybody was on the same page until the politics got involved. And all of a sudden, they want to take the Chamor Land Trust land and make it take, use everybody's name, use burial sites as reason to put another impediment to building the hospital at Epa Point. Since these plans were made in 2021...
The new hospital was never considered in processing this. I think that is a personal privilege.
These plans were made in 2021. The map is very clear. If I could ask the AV to just put up the map, Mr. Chair. There's two maps, the one with the yellow and the green. The part that's in yellow, Mr. Chair, is the part that Andy LaGuagna used, the five acres or four acres. That's the part that he used in his testimony in the letter that we pass out this morning. He's very, very clear. I asked him, can I see the map of Oco, where the shrine is in relation to the entire property? How much of the property is left after the shrine? Mr. LaGuagna responded, FYI, we only took four acres. Originally, up to five acres was allowed, but quite a bit of the land designated was on the cliffside, or rather, the slope down towards Hilton. We pulled back to try and limit our footprint so that the prime developer land is reserved for future, call it more productive development. We provided a 30-foot buffer strip between the shrine and the prime land. We can discuss further when you get the drawing. Then he sent the drawing, and he says, "Here are the maps of the site with photos. Let me know or call me if you have any questions." By the way, the law says up to five acres and not four. As you will see, our design did not cover five acres. Some area is covered by the parking lot. That's the five acres in yellow. The green is an approximate drawing of the 14 acres that the Department of Land Management intends by their map that they just signed in April 2024 and had all the directors sign in April 2024, and CLTC looks like the acting director cited in June 26, 2024, to sever all of the green property as well. That's where we get the 14 acres. That's the land grab we're talking about, Mr. Chair. I think it's extremely relevant when we're going to put $5 million in the hands of people who want to tell us they didn't know anything about it, they just signed off, or we know we're only supposed to use five acres, but we're going to take 14. We know the design, we're going to go out of an RFP that's only going to affect these five acres, but we're going to affect 14. That's the part that's not making sense to me. And if we want to move this project along quickly, it's overdue, then keep the politics out of it. This map was, that was signed in last month, April 2024, taking the 14 acres. We were just shown that by the Director of Land Management yesterday. So I've asked the Attorney General to weigh in with an opinion as to whether the law that says five acres to me actually allows them to take 14 acres. So if they're correct, then I still don't see why they need to take 14 acres when the designer and the architect and the engineers all have in writing their plans to put this on less than five acres. But what really bothered me yesterday was the rationale by the Director of Land Management using the architect as the excuse as to why we needed to take 14 acres versus five. That really bothers me. I'm glad I had that letter in writing. Because at first I heard of 14 acres. And I know the Director of Land Management has told us, "It's for the NAFTA, so I wanted to give them more." That's a great intention. But it just doesn't show anywhere that that was necessary. And he's criticizing giving the raceway. And I want to remind him that I think the original law to give the raceway 250 acres for 50 years came up in his time. So I just want to point out, Mr. Chair, that if we want to move forward this project, we want to fund the NAFTA, and we have the money to fund it, then all these directors need to stay out of politics with this thing.
A point of inquiry, Mr. Chair.
Madam Speaker, stand by. Point of inquiry, state your point of inquiry.
I just need to find out, I mean, if these extra four acres that we're talking about is...
Extra nine acres.
Extra nine acres. I mean, couldn't they put in an amendment to remove that? Because apparently those extra acres are not important to the NAFTA. Is that, is that possible? Can, can...
I believe that is possible, Mr. Chair.
It is possible, but introduce the amendment to Bill 33-204 and work with that. Because it'll go to the Speaker's office, it's our committee.
I believe it should be a condition of the funding, Mr. Chair. We are giving them $5 million. It is completely within our purview to examine where they're going to spend it, how they're going to spend it, whether they're going to tell the truth while spending it, and whether we're going to get the product that was actually designed for us, whether the rest of the property is going to remain usable for us or not, or they're going to do something else because we gave them 14 acres.
Point of inquiry again, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Chair. So you can, you can actually add an amendment to remove those extra nine acres. We could, and we can end this debate right now. We want it to, couldn't we?
When we get to third round, okay? Let's just have the Speaker continue on her time.
I appreciate that, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I appreciate my colleague. I support that. So again, the shippo has brought the plans down today. The actual, I'm sorry, can you just put that map up one more time real quick? Do you see the purple? The purple's the actual building.
Point of information, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, we've got the shippo just walking out. Just got up and walked out. I don't think we excused the panel yet. And also, Mr. Chair, point of information, you know, Director Borja, you know, I appreciate if you don't take the cup and put it over the microphone to break our equipment, please, and be a bit more respectful to this body.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Speaker, can you go ahead and continue, please? Unless you need the shippo here. You need him here? Okay. They're going to call him in. So stand by.
Point of information, sir.
Sir.
He's not under subpoena. He is not under subpoena. He can come or go as he wishes.
Well, he's coming back in, my understanding. Is he coming back in?
I can proceed if the body will take my word for it, but I looked at the maps, Mr. Chair, and it looks...
Okay, well, why don't you go ahead and continue, and we see if we can bring him in. If not, I just want to wrap it up. We only got a minute and 11 seconds left. And then we go to third round, so, okay. Continue on, Madam Speaker, so we can move along.
All right. On this map, the purple shows the actual building. And he already said he put in a 30-foot barrier, border. I think, I'm sure that's the yellow. But the purple's the building. And when we looked at the plans that the shipper brought for us today, the measurements of that purple building are about 300 feet across. And then yesterday, again, the shippo said this thing can be built within two acres. And we have given them, and Andy LaGuagna said he used four acres. The law gave them up to five acres. And this, I just think it's absolutely not necessary. We can proceed forward in unison and not really disparage this site, this project, or anything about it, this man's name, by claiming that he needs 14 acres, Mr. Chair. This is Massey.
You're done, Madam Speaker. Okay, my colleagues, we have completed the two rounds. We are now going to move to the third round with amendments and comments. And with that, I will now excuse the panel members. Thank you very much for appearing. Let's take a recess at this point. Thank you. Committee of the House, call back to order. My colleagues, we're in the third round. There's been amendments that has been submitted. No further amendments will be allowed. The amendments that were submitted was introduced, two of them were introduced by Madam Speaker Trelle. And with that, Madam Speaker, you decide which one. We'll go with the first one. The first one was...
Point of information, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I only have one, Mr. Chair.
Point of information, are we going by who submitted the amendments first?
Yeah.
Well, I think they're both... Oh, wait.
No.
Okay, the first one was that...
Did they give me a copy?
Okay, the TTT is first. I guess that's you, Senator Tello. I'm just trying to pull it up now, wait. Okay, that was... Okay, yep.
I believe our colleague, Mr. Chair, Point of Information, has it on their desk.
Yes. Please, Senator Tello, please introduce your amendment.
Thank you. Thank you for recognizing, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I'm sure that many of us here want to ensure, I'm sure all of us here want to ensure that this shrine is built and done in a way that's very transparent. $5 million is quite a bit of money. But I think the most important part of this legislation ensure that no shenanigans are put in place, that what seems to be political is addressed. So this amendment, Mr. Chair, is all about this, the buffer area that was spoke about earlier. That additional nine acres at far exceeds the original bill of only five acres. So what my amendment does, Mr. Chair, it strikes out, colleagues, if you see on Section 2, I've incorporated Section 2 reservation of land for tomorrow's national shrine, notwithstanding other provisions of law, rules, or regulations, up to five acres but not less than two acres, including geodict, transglation survey, transglation survey, and, okay, for survey monuments. And then here we strike out, and an appropriate buffer zone to strike that out. And then it continues on with the previous law that was passed in 2016 regarding the shrine. So all we're doing is taking the original law, and we're striking out, and an appropriate buffer zone. That's what my amendment does, Mr. Chair. And wait, before I move on, I just want to read into the record too as well. I'm sure it was read earlier. But to remind my colleagues that this email that was sent to the good speaker, and it reads here, Teresa, and everyone has a copy on the floor, but I just want everyone to know who's listening to this public hearing, which I'm finding out many are doing because they're texting me left and right. It said, Teresa, I'm at home now, but I can give it to you on Monday. I don't have a computer at home to access our files at the office. However, let me check if you have the file drawing on my iPhone. FYI, we only took four acres. Originally, up to five acres was allowed, but quite a bit of land designated was on cliffside, or rather, the slope downward toward the Hilton. We pulled back to try and limit our footprint so that the prime developed land is reserved for future call at more productive development. We provided a 30-feet-plus buffer strip between the shrine and the prime land. We can discuss further when you get the drawings. Our design intent is to preserve the large parcel of Oka Point for the future, as I said, productive use. So it clearly states here that the late Andrew LaGuatina utilized only four acres of the five and had that 30-feet, not acres, but 30-feet buffer strip between the shrine and the prime land. So it's obvious, Mr. Chair, that there is enough land based on what the shippo said, only needed two and a half acres to build the shrine. That even allows even more room for any kind of buffer to stay within the five acres that Mr. LaGuatina here had wrote. So I ask my colleagues that we stay within the five acres. There's obviously enough land to have any kind of buffer. And according to LaGuatina, it's only 30 feet. So I ask my colleagues for their support. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Tydegring. I just want to make sure, remind you what I mentioned earlier when one of our colleagues, Senator Rangel, mentioned it. This is an appropriation bill. And that amendment, I'm not going to debate the amendment. I'm just going to say, because it's an appropriation bill, it's not germane to the bill. But I'll let the motion go through with the colleagues to decide the fate of the amendment. Does anyone like to speak on it? Please state, raise your hand or something so I know who you are.
Mr. Chair, on a point of information, based on your ruling, sir, you made a ruling, so you have to ask the body. If you make a ruling that it is not germane, then you have to say, please, author of the amendment, I'm ruling this out of order unless the body overrules the presider. So, Mr. Chair, that is what the proper motion should be.
But he's not. He's allowing it, Mr. Chair, point of order.
So I'll make that statement. Thank you, Madam Vice. I'm ruling this non-germane to the bill because it's an appropriation bill. And if you want, Senator Tello, you can ask the body if they want to overrule me, and I'll be happy to be overruled. And we can move from there.
Well, Mr. Chair, I think that the first thing that you allowed was you do have concerns that it might not be germane, and you allowed the body to speak on it. Now, I hope you stick to what you said instead of being coerced by someone else to tell you how to do it, because you are the chair, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, thank you.
And I would appreciate your first suggestion to allow people to speak on this amendment. And then, if you want to rule it not germane, then I understand that, okay? But can you please stick to what you said first?
Hold on, hold on first. You have a point of information you wanted to bring up?
Sir, just based on our standing rules.
Okay, good enough. Good enough for me. Okay, colleagues, let's calm down a little bit. I said it earlier, when Senator Rangel brought it up, it's an appropriation bill. Anything to do with the land, it's not germane. So...
Mr. Chair.
I was willing to allow you to speak, but because I'm hearing that the standing rule requires, if it's not germane, it's not germane, so let's move. I don't believe it's germane.
Mr. Chairman, how is it not germane when the language is in the existing bill? Yeah, it's a point of information because the language is in the existing bill. We're looking at what we're funding. Isn't it an amendment to the existing language for the $5 million?
The appropriation does not identify Bill 33-204, okay?
Well, but it's an appropriation bill. I mean, can't we identify what we are funding and not funding? We're just simply appropriating money, not knowing what is being funded here? Because one thing is what we were told in the plans, and then we had government officials up here giving us their interpretation.
up here giving us their interpretation. It's their interpretation. So I think it's, there's nothing wrong with us specifying what we're funding and what we're not funding.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, a point of information as well. I don't think there's anything that's not germane about the legislature attaching strings to the purse. This is totally normal for us to fund things and put conditions to that funding. And I think what we're attempting to do with this amendment is reiterate for the second time that you have to follow the law. You have to follow what's in black and white.
Yes, and the standing rules are in black and white. Remember, I didn't vote for it in the beginning. But, but you know what? In all fairness to everyone, I'll give you all a shot at it, okay? Are there any objections to this amendment? Because you already spoke. I see two, three. Okay, all in favor.
I want to speak on the amendment, sir. Sir, that was a point of information. I want to speak on the amendment.
Oh, you want to speak to the amendment?
Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead. Speak on the amendment.
The amendment as proffered is, has some concerns for me, Mr. Chair. I think, based on what was just read, based on the good senator from Jonia who spoke about the letter from Andy LaGuatia, if this amendment goes through, it gets rid of any buffer, including the 30 feet that Andy LaGuatia originally proposed.
Point of information.
I'm just saying.
Yeah, point of information.
Okay, let's hear the point of information.
Point of information, thank you.
Your point of information.
Yeah, yes. Actually, Mr. Chair, if you notice Andy's letter, he had 30 feet, still staying within the 50, I mean, still staying within the five acres. So it doesn't stop any buffer utilizing the current square acreage.
Okay, thank you.
So just a point of information. It does not harm it.
Continue, Madam Vice.
But, Mr. Chair, with all due respect.
Yes.
Based on that, it concerns me. It's not clear. I understand there's another proffered amendment that will come up that I'm more inclined to support, but this amendment, I do not want to leave the intention of the good architect of Mr. LaGuatia. So I respectfully object to this. But if they got the votes, they can do it and we move on. So, thank you, Mr. Chair, for giving me the opportunity.
Now, I saw two other hands go up before Senator Barnett. Do you want to speak, Senator Fisher? No. Senator Zinkus, no. Now I'm going to go to Senator Barnett before you. You want to speak, right? Senator Barnett, you want to speak on the amendment?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just to be clear, we're now allowed to speak on the amendment? Okay, thank you. Sidozmasi. Yes, this amendment, right here.
Yeah, TTT.
Page one, add a new section of the bill, and strike out the appropriate buffer zone. Yeah, I support this amendment, Mr. Chair. I think, again, to reiterate my comments previously, a previous legislature saw the need for this shrine to honor our ancestors, and they passed a law that allowed this monument to be created. And that's that. And now what we've discovered in this committee of the whole over the last couple of days is you have the Director of Land Management who's making these judgment calls and deviating from outside the law. And that, to me, Mr. Chair, is a very slippery slope. If the legislature is going to pass a bill that is subsequently signed into law, and that bill says, you use this many acres for this project, and then we're going to get directors who are just willy-nilly going to decide that they can supersede the authority of the legislature, they can supersede the authority of the governor, and make a determination that they can add 10 acres? I mean, is that what kind of body we want to have? Where we're going to go pass laws and then it's just going to be open to wide interpretation and circumventing of the law so that they can add to this property that doesn't even need to be added to? I mean, we are literally reading on the record an email from a dead man. And he, in this email, said that the 30-foot buffer strip is provided for. We had the Director of Land Management casting all kinds of rumors and speculation about the intent of the architect, but we have here an actual email that's been put into the record that is from the architect who designed the shrine, and it's right there in black and white. It says, "The design intent is to preserve the large parcel of Oka for future productive use." So there's no justification to grow this shrine from the five acres allowed in the law to 14 acres just because some director thought it was a good idea to do so. Last time I checked, we don't run this island based on director's ideas. We run it on the policies and the laws that are executed and passed by this body and the administration. And anything else is, I think, a deviation, sir. We're not here to debate and discuss the importance of the shrine. That has already been done by previous legislatures. And this idea that we can't add conditions to this funding is, it's frankly ridiculous. I've noticed a trend in the last couple of years that we have some colleagues in here all too eager to erode the authority and the power of the legislature. This is our authority to pass laws, and that's what we did in this case. The legislature said, "Our ancestors are worthy of this recognition, of this honor, of this tribute and this respect. Let's construct this shrine." And that's what this appropriation bill should be addressing. It should be addressing what is on the books in law, not what the Director of Land Management decided is good. And it's not like he made, used a little bit of discretion. He basically put a buffer zone that's twice as big as the actual property for the shrine. And we have colleagues in here who are hell-bent on getting this map, which exists, outside of the law. And somehow, we're talking about taking this map that hasn't even passed the full muster of the Tomorrow Land Trust Commission, and now that's going to be the law of the land? We passed the law of the land already relative to the Naftan Shrine. So let's stick to it and let's hold, you know, if we pass laws, you got to follow the law, I mean, follow the law. And the law says, let me just read the black and white. "Notwithstanding any other provision of law, rule, or regulation, up to five acres but not less than two acres, including any geodetic triangulation survey monuments and an appropriate buffer zone." That is what the law says in black and white. It doesn't say, "Director of Land Management can add however many acres he wants. Director of Land Management can guess about the intentions of the architect. Director of Land Management can circumvent the authority of the legislature to pass laws." That's not how we operate. And so I support this amendment, but I just want to say it's unfortunate that we have to amend a bill that may become law when we already have a law on the books that says, "Do this." So now we're basically saying, "Do this again." So I rise in support of the amendment, but I just want to say that it's unfortunate that we have to pass the same law we already passed just to get through some of the thick skulls that we had in here the last couple of days, Mr. Chair. Sidozmasi.
Thank you, Senator Barnett. Does anyone else like to speak to the amendment? Senator Brown?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I also rise in support of the amendment, and I do echo the concerns of the previous speaker. You know, this bill, unfortunately, you know, to take something as important as this, and I think we all recognize the need to address the reinternment of our ancestors that have been unearthed for many years. I had the opportunity, Mr. Chairman, to go to the Bishop Museum and actually see a number of these remains that were on shelves in boxes and fortunately have since been repatriated to Guam, are part of the collection of our ancestral remains that we want to reinterne. But even I have to say, in all my years in government here, the presentations that were made by the directors and the latitude of which they determined how and what the footprint would be of this shrine is concerning. This is a substantial taking of land. And, you know, I wish certainly the architect, I think we all respect the work of the architect, Andy LaGuatia and all the work he's done. We've seen all the beautiful, we don't need to look far. We just need to go out of the building, look across the street, and look at the creativity and beauty of his work and the statement of his work. It's just unfortunate he's not, and no longer with us today, to be able to add on further. I mean, I'm reading what he put in black and white, and I'm not questioning what is written here. But I think it's very clear that the buffer strip is included. I'm sure the original, while I was not in this legislature that originally passed this bill, I think it seemed to be very clear with the fact that the legislature specified the amount of acreage so that the remaining property there at Oka Point, or do I have it? No, Yipau Point. The director said Yipau Point. They're within close proximity. But Yipau Point was intended for additional development. He was talking about some high-rise development, I guess, that may have been proposed at the time. Whatever the case may be, I'm bothered even more so with the politics that's being played because we know full well, Mr. Chair, let's not kid ourselves about the dynamics of what's going on here. Because I've known Joe Borja many years, probably 30-plus years. I've never seen him expand his interpretation of land as much as I have, unfortunately, the last couple of days. But we cannot operate that way. And to take something that is as important as the reinternment of our ancestors and decide that, oh, we're just going to add on another nine acres. And I hope our speaker, as her vice-chair of this committee, if she does, and I'd like to call an oversight hearing with Tomorrow Land Trust, and I'd like to know if there's no official meeting of the board to approve this signing, what the heck is going on? Because if we're able to move land with just a director signing without authorization, nine additional acres, then I'm concerned about that. Nine additional acres of what is probably some of the most prime property in that part of the island. How many millions of dollars did he sign off on? This is a kind of borrow Senator, you know, Tello Tydegrue's shenanigans that she uses with frequency, unfortunately the need to, that is going on here. And we're taking what should be, and to the sponsor of the bill, I hope we can come up with some kind of resolution so that indeed our ancestors are being properly respected because this disagreement on this issue and how this played out. I mean, the people of Guam always, of course, get to decide themselves, looking at the information of how we are taking positions and how we vote and how much in their interest we're making decisions versus our own. But I certainly rise in support. I think this issue needs to be addressed. The architect has relayed the 30-foot buffer is already included. I mean, as far as well as I can read Ifino English with my couple degrees, it sounds to me very clear that he's included that and is mindful of the amount of acreage that the original law provided for. I don't see anything where the legislature is going to say, oh, we're specifying the acreage, but we leave you all the latitude in the world to decide. I mean, if this was our private property, would we be so casual about it? But, oh, we can be so casual because it's public land? That's a big stretch. Not everybody has one acre, half an acre, mesea, to have nine extra acres, even if I had hectares. But to be so casual in their interpretation, oh, we're just going to include this, and this is the surveyor's interpretation, and this is the architect's interpretation. At least the information provided here on the email from the architect at least cleared up that idea. I don't think the architect from his own Fino English here was under any misrepresentation that he was, and the fact that he emphasized he was able to do it within four acres, I think, is a compliment to his work. So I definitely rise in support, Mr. Chair. I really don't want to see the misuse of any additional property that could be used for other critical needs, whatever it is that is determined moving forward, be it a hospital or some other development, to be impeded because of the interpretations of directors. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity to comment on this amendment.
Does anybody else want to like to speak to it? Okay, Senator Duenes, sir?
Sidozmasi, Mr. Chairman. I believe your original ruling was correct, but I'll just comment on this. And I like the discussion on an oversight hearing because I think that's exactly what we need. Because the bottom line is, once again, we are here on an appropriation measure that does not record any map. This legislature is not recording a map. Where we have a dispute right now, particularly with the director on the record here saying, he interpreted the law different. And the buffer zone that he created was a cliff line, undevelopable cliff line of over four acres upwards of 42%. And then, the remainder, and our continued conversations here are about a land taking to not allow for a hospital to be built, that there's no public law for a hospital. And there's also the bill, which I support and will vote for again. Hopefully, in the future, we will delineate a map. Because right now, you cannot encroach on a property that's not even recorded. So my point is, is that we continue to argue this point that is not a point in fact. So let's deal with the land issue as a land issue. Let's deal with the appropriation as an appropriation issue. Because if this appropriation goes through, and, Mr. Chair, I will remind you, I believe it was you who included a $5 million appropriation when we first had the section or the remittances of the $60 million to Guam from the EITC. You remember that? So this $5 million is not out of bounds. It actually passed in a prior law. So here we are again. It was deleted because it was deemed not an appropriate funding source because it was a reimbursement from the federal government for EITC that the people of Guam had been paying in taxes. That's why I sat down with all of the individuals from Young Men's League of Guam and those who said, "Please, give us another appropriation." Let's hold germane to this conversation, Mr. Chairman, because this is an appropriation measure. Let's drag the land agencies in front of us in an oversight hearing by the land committee, and let's put this on the record. Why did you do this? Why did you record this map this way? But Innaftan has never moved. It's still sitting on the great Señor LaGuatia's A&amp;E design. Now, I could see there being an encroachment if the Innaftan moved. Because then you're moving a physical structure into a new piece of land that would be immovable if you built it. But right now, what Land Management has recorded is the discretion that they used. And good, there's an agey opinion coming forward, but it did not move Innaftan Mininata. So we are trying to appropriate here, and now we're moving for amendments to basically dispute the interpretation of Land Management. And I think that should be a standalone bill as a result of a properly held oversight so that it can be determined why and how this expansion was put forward. So I don't disagree that we need to have that conversation. But my vote on this bill is going to be based on an appropriation to carry out the mission of building the Innaftan Mininata on the piece of property that has not changed. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Duenes. Does anyone else like to speak to the amendment? Senator Zinkus?
Sidozmasi, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Chairman, dispense a fin. Angin bayhutuli itano, beituli para i minaoli itautauta. Este amendment malago po mp. Iitano para ma protehi para i manriku. Sa masasangan na malago matuli este sa gua impenya para ma hotsa espetot. Hotzi ta representanta gini holo koe milaoli kimtautauta. But i interesavi manriku. Angin bayhusaki itano, angin bayhutuli itano, beituli para itautauta. Very, very important thing, and I have to agree with the retiring speaker, my good, my good colleague, Senator Duenes. He is right. He is right. We are here to talk about an appropriation measure para Innaftani Manyanata. Hokokaya no. Hokok... That's all we're doing. And I agree with him, your first judgment, Mr. Chair, that this is not germane. Sisus Massey, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Now, we're coming down the wire. Madam Speaker, before I ask Senator Teller to close.
Sisus Massey, Mr. Chair. I appreciate all the discussion. I personally don't think it takes an oversight hearing as to how the land was transferred because we had them in here and they told us exactly how. It was through this language that the amendment proposes to strike out an appropriate buffer zone. And the words "including an appropriate buffer zone", the Director of Land Management on his own interpreted that, he said, to mean that he can add on whatever buffer zone he wants to the maximum five acres that was authorized in the bill. Pure and simple, that's what happened. So he added on nine acres buffer zone. And he's saying, some of that is on the cliff. Yeah, some of it's on the cliff, but not fifty percent, not forty percent, if you look at the map. That's an overexaggeration. He's taking them all the way over to the other coast. So we are, of course, speculating, why would they do that? Why would they put this project in jeopardy over something like that? And yes, some of us can... There's only one obvious reason in front of us. Unless someone else has anything logical to tell us, why would they need nine acres buffer zone on a three-hundred-feet-by-one-hundred-and-fifty-foot shrine? The architect, in his brilliance, he connected it exactly as the law suggested to the rock. So on this map that we have put up earlier, where it shows his design, it says the shrine and it says the rock. And it says five acres reserved for Naftan Manyanata. He also connected it to the Saugan Katuru in Chamorro by going along the cliff line. So he did preserve the view for us as well. And then he put some parking because he had all that extra space to add parking. So removing the language by this amendment will not harm the project. It will not take away from the design. What it's going to do is take away from the Director of Land Management any possible reinterpretation of the law to include unknown buffer zones in addition to the buffer zone that the designer already incorporated into the project and in addition to the five acres that are surrounding the three-hundred-foot-by-one-hundred-and-fifty-foot shrine. That's all it does. It's for future directors, future everybody, to make sure they don't deviate, that we don't scar this important effort to fund this project with anything unnecessary. It will not eliminate the buffer that's already ready in there, designed, engineered. The first Director of Land Management actually set aside, according to this law, only two and a half acres. That was a square right adjacent to Saugan Katuru in Chamorro. So I give credit to this director that he came in and Andy Leguanyas was really instrumental in this because he walked the property and saw what was there and decided that what it should connect to. And I just think if they need fourteen acres, if they can put up a good reason why they need fourteen instead of five acres for the shrine that's already designed so beautifully, then they should come up and put that in writing, be transparent about it, show the people why they need fourteen acres from Yipau Point. Show the land trust commissioners especially why they need fourteen acres out of the land trust property instead of five along the cliff line. This is going to be a beautiful shrine when it is completed. It's going to house up to three thousand humans, our ancestors. We're going to rebury them. So I think this amendment will help us to move forward with clean slate, no bad feelings, no more different interpretations. We're all on the same page again, like we were years ago when we first, the legislature agreed to this, to put it there despite objection. So I would just ask my colleagues to, let's support this amendment. And let's just make it clear for everyone of these directors, after they get their money, what their marching orders really are. And that is, stick to the original plan, like you said you were going to, like you told us today you're going to, so let's just make sure they do that. No more land taking, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Senator Teller, you would like to close?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I first like to thank you so much for allowing the conversation and debate on the floor for this amendment, even though I probably know what you're going to do. But, and I also appreciate everyone who brought their concerns up and suggestions. An oversight? Well, I agree. It was, we had the same players that are going to be in front of us on an oversight that was here today. But the one player that we really need in front of us is the Attorney General's opinion on this, especially when it comes to Chamorro Land Trust signing over documents and paper, giving away a property without even the consent of the Board, let alone to have that power. And he claims he did it because of the law. Well, the law didn't say fourteen acres. It did not say that. You know, the whole appropriation measure here, sometimes you look at the amount, how did this five million come about? I mean, that was a question that, we were talking about all the land, but what really decided on five million? And I didn't see any documentation talking about what this five million is going to spend for. Is there going to be a maintenance cost attached to that five million so that we can maintain this facility so it's beautiful for the next generations moving forward? Was that incorporated? So, Mr. Chair, and I again thank you for the opportunity for my colleagues to speak on the amendment, whether they support it or not. I think the people of Guam want to hear what you have to say, everyone has to say and where they're going with this. Because I trust in the people of Guam. They know what's going on. They see what's happening, that this has been dragged out because it did become political. And they're all concerned too. Those who want the option to have that hospital at Oka Point or Yipau Point, whatever the point is, we're going to need a new hospital. And this is a great location to have it too, especially next to something that's going to be so beautiful for us to look at. A shrine and a beautiful hospital, all in the same area. Let's hope that happens. So thank you, Mr. Chair, again for the opportunity.
Thank you, Senator Tidigwe. Do we have an objection to this? Yes, we do. I see two hands. Okay, all in favor of the amendment, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four. Motion fails. We'll now move to the next amendments. Madam Speaker, you have an amendment?
I do, Mr. Chair, and I'm questioning the failure of the previous amendment, whether that signals that the body in here is condoning a Director of Land Management to take fourteen acres versus five acres. I have five minutes to speak on the bill, right?
You have five minutes to speak on your amendment.
Or amendment.
We're not in the comments yet.
I'm doing both.
But it's both.
That's correct.
There you go.
Thank you. So what signal is that? Why mar this project? My amendment, Mr. Chair, is to add on the words to the five-million-dollar appropriation to add these words. "Notwithstanding any other provision of law, the land severed for Naftan Manyanata shrine shall not exceed five acres. This limitation shall be a condition of any funding provided under this act." It also adds the words, "We're giving the money to the Department of Parks and Recreation." That's where the shippo is housed. But as we've seen, it is the shippo who contracted the engineer, the architect, who has to take inventory of the remains. He is the one who's going to lead this project. So I'm adding in the words "as approved by the shippo" because we've seen some disagreements between Directors of Parks and Rec... and the shippos, but the state Historic Preservation Officer or shippo is really the one who should be in charge of what happens with these remains. They should be in charge of making sure that this project, so that they can be accountable, Mr. Chair, as well. Instead of coming in and saying, I signed the map, I don't know because the Director of Land Management told me this is the map, that they're going to be in charge and say, this is what we said, five acres. It's going to be designed like this, as Andy Leguanyas laid out. It's going to be adjacent to the rock. It's going to be all of the other parameters that they already have engineered. That's what I'm asking. I don't want to allow for any other directors to get involved and move things around or take even more land now that we're giving them more money. Because without that other previous amendment, it still allows them to take even more than fourteen acres. They never came to tell us about the fourteen acres. They just took it. They didn't even tell the commission about it. They took it. They severed it. So what prevents them from doing that again? So this puts as a condition of the funding that the land that will be severed will not exceed five acres. And the construction of the Naftan Manyanata shrine, as approved by the shippo, so that he has a say in this five million dollars, Mr. Chair. That's my amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Vice, you have commented the amendment?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you very much. You know, Mr. Chair, as I look at this amendment as proffered by the Speaker from Jonya, I'm inclined, and I say it right, I'm inclined to support the Speaker's amendment because it considered the buffer zone built in by Mr. Leguanyas himself. It would also ensure the map he submitted can be followed when building the shrine. You know, Mr. Chair, I hope that the fact that I'm not objecting to this downsizing of the Naftan Manyanata, that it can put to bed any false notions about what I'm hell-bent on doing in this body. I want you to know, Mr. Chair, I've always been open to compromise and the agreement to this amendment should be proof enough of how I treat my colleagues' idea. This amendment is not a bad amendment. This amendment ensures that the public law that I voted for back in the Thirty-third Guam Legislature and the good minority leader did back then, that it is going to go through. Thirty-two-some years later, we're going to finally see something because there's some movement. So yes, I ask my colleagues to help support this amendment because it'll give a clear picture of why we need to move forward with this funding source. Sisus Massey, Mr. Chair. I support the amendment.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Senator Brown? You let the young one first? Okay. No, he called for ladies first. Senator Brown? You respect your elders. That's the name of a horse. But okay, go ahead. Senator Brown?
Sisus Massey, Mr. Chair. I too rise in support of the amendment. Commend the author for its introduction as it really addresses a lot of the concerns, again, which are, you know, not relative to whether or not we support the shrine. It's not a downsizing of the shrine. What actually happened was the shrine is on the books in black and white in law and the Director of Land Management, outside of the law, upsized the buffer around the shrine. So we're not downsizing the shrine. The shrine is enshrine again in law. We're not trying to use any of the land to benefit the rich or we're not trying to keep the land from helping our people. We're just simply saying, we passed a law that deals with this Naftan shrine. Please follow the law that was passed by the previous legislature. And the amendment speaks to that. It allows the shippo to have the authority to approve everything. And then also, it puts down here again in black and white that the land severed for the shrine shall not exceed five acres. And it puts, again, a condition, which I believe is absolutely germane, to the funding. It says, hey, if you don't meet the conditions, you're not going to get the money. So again, this muddying of the water and this discussion and trying to make it about who supports the shrine and who doesn't, you know, who loves our ancestors more. We all love our ancestors. That's why a previous legislature passed a law to make this shrine to honor them. And I don't know if there's really much more else to say, but I support the amendment and I also am encouraged by the author's support of it as well. Mr. Chair, Sisus Massey.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Senator Brown?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. And I also rise in support of this amendment. I think this will put essentially to bed the concern certainly I had with regards to the expansion of the footprint for the shrine. And I concur again. I don't think any of us are against this project moving forward. We want to see it. It's been a long time in coming. And I know that, as the sponsor had relayed to me, I also want to relay because we've had some support over the years in helping store these remains. Yesterday, we had the opportunity to present a resolution to Phil Flores and his bank, Pacific, who has helped store a number of our remains that were repatriated back to Guam for quite a number of years right here in Hagatia. And so Beba Bank Pacific, because I certainly want to extend that to them. I know Senator Tina Barnes and our other members wanted to extend that as well, but because of session, we're not able to come. But I wanted to recognize that contribution that Mr. Flores has made in supporting the caretaking of our remains that we all want to see properly reinterned and certainly in a very significant location where they can be honored, where everyone here in our community moving forward will have an opportunity to go and pay their respects and appreciate the beauty and the island that they have left us and that we have inherited. So I certainly support this amendment, Mr. Chairman. I think this will address certainly my concerns. It's unfortunate the directors that came before us, I'll tell you. I'm frightened if this is how they take this and mutate and expand and just take acres and acres of multimillion dollars worth of property and have their own interpretation and leave the surveyors to their own interpretation. The fact that Speaker Terlahi has provided this correspondence with the late Andrew Leguanyas in outlining specifically what he did with his design that at least, without question to me, clarifies what his position was in providing and very conscientiously in providing the design to be put in place with the land that was designated, even saying, you know, I did it within four acres instead of five. I really appreciate that, even though he's not here today to tell us himself, but at least he's left what he's written down in writing to clarify that concern. So I think, and I think we all desire to see this project move forward in a very positive way. And this amendment will allow that and give us some comfort moving forward and at least the will of the people, the decision of this body, at least will come into place and be recognized. Because if we're going to leave the interpretation of the law to some of these directors and their interpretation and how they've expanded this beyond what was originally intended, that's very concerning. But this amendment would certainly address those concerns. So with that, Mr. Chair, I certainly rise in support of the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Brown. That being said, don't see any hands. Senator Duñez?
Sisus Massey, Mr. Chairman. And I'm glad that the author of the bill is gracious to move in this direction. And this amendment as written with the notwithstanding clause at this time now puts the pressure back on for how the land and the map is being recorded. The reason why I objected to the prior amendment was because it was referring to the law that was under interpretation. Now this is an interpretation from this body. Now this is an interpretation from this body. That's the proper way to do it. We're going to speak. We will take and eliminate any possible interpretations because now we've made an interpretation. You know, Mr. Chair, this notwithstanding provision has been both a friend and a frenemy on this floor. Some people, when it doesn't work for them, will be upset, and I don't have hair, but hair on fire when we use it. But if we like it because it fits what we want to do, then we're happy with it. Whether it means we're pulling bills out of committee or whatever else we're doing, it's a friend or it's a frenemy. So Madam or Mr. Chair, you know, in deference to the author of the bill, although I wanted to see legislation stand alone, this works. And now I hope we will continue to have the oversight going forward. Because the bottom line is is that we need to continue to delineate by law. By law. Because we could introduce a bill to do that ourselves, but we didn't. And the final comment I want to make from the day that you approached me, Mr. Chair, and the author of the bill, both as you two as co-sponsors, will you help me get an appropriation of $5 million to finally realize the construction of this monument? And I said yes. And so by doing that, we have consensus at this time, I'm sure, if this amendment passes. And we will move forward and do the business. And then I hope we get down to business of ensuring that we continue to discuss this valuable piece of property going forward and introduce legislation, if we have intentions, to really establish meets and bounds of what our intentions are so there's no speculation. Sidoos Masi, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Duennas. Senator Tello?
Just real quick, I know that we're past lunchtime, so...
I know.
Mr. Chair, I stand in full support of this amendment, and I thank the good speaker for coming up with a way to ensure, you know, that this land stays within five acres and no more. And, you know, just for the sake of time, Mr. Chair, I greatly appreciate, even though my amendment didn't pass prior to this, I think this amendment will work just as well. And it was my intention in the First Amendment. I'm just glad that we have everyone's consensus that it'll pass. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. No one else, right? Okay. Madam Speaker, do you like to close? Because there's no objection.
Yes, sir, I would like to. Thank you. Last night, after the shock of finding out about the new map of 14 acres being signed off by Department of Land Management, asking CLTC Acting Director to come in and sign, the shippo to come in and sign, and others, I was quite concerned because the language of the law seemed very clear to me. There is some conflicting language in the intention, but that was not what God enacted. The body of the law was very clear. Up to five acres. And so, but last night I asked the Attorney General, sent a letter to the Attorney General's office for an opinion. I'm hoping that this amendment will force a redo of the map that takes 14 acres instead of five acres, that they will just redo that today, hopefully, and be done. And that nobody gets indicted for some kind of undue land grab. And if there was any debate, I would think a prudent director would get an opinion or ask the legislature to clarify as opposed to taking 14 versus five acres. But you know, I thank my colleagues for their support, especially the sponsor of the bill. You know, as you know, Mr. Chair, this project, this Naftan Manaynata, it's been long, and we have such deep respect for this project that we are willing to appropriate $5 million to the Department of Parks and Rec, who has clearly put these plans in storage for quite a while now. They haven't come to us with an RFP, with any cost estimates that have been updated. Nothing that we have required of so many other agencies before we give them even $50,000. So $5 million is a lot of trust. And apparently, you know, we shouldn't have to mandate all of these details. But if that's what's going to get this project to move, then let's mandate. As you know, I put in a bill to appropriate $1.5 million to this project back in January 2024. It never had a public hearing. This bill was put in in April. It had a public hearing. And we're here. We have excess monies, hopefully, right today, that exceed $5 million. So I'm all for giving the $5 million to build the Naftan. I'm not as confident as I wish I could be as to who's leading the project and how fast this is going to get done based on what we've seen in our session in the last couple of days. Even getting people to attend. Their action, their only action has been in April 2024 to create a map that takes 14 acres versus five. And if you recall, for those who think we're over-politicizing something, every time I had oversight over the Epa Point, whether it was suitable for a hospital, I had hearings on the bills regarding the hospital. I've had tomorrow Land Trust Commission hearings, trying to fix errors of the past where directors signed off on things that the commissioners did not approve. And we're going back now, trying to retroactively see what we can do about that. I don't wish that on anybody, and I don't think we should operate that way. Where directors think they can go off and do things without the commission's approval or like clearly trying to stretch an interpretation of the law. Why make it controversial? So I want to move forward again with deep respect for what we are trying to do in the big picture, and that is to build this shrine, to build it now while we have the money to get this inventory done that they say they haven't even started yet so that those human remains, our ancestors, can be put to rest. So this amendment again, and the $5 million for the bill, I support the $5 million. And I hope for my colleagues to support this amendment that it will be limited as originally intended to the five acres, and it's still going to be extremely beautiful. And it is not in any way a downsizing. That word is inaccurate. It is conforming to the original law. Sidoos Masi, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Are there any objection? There are no objections. The amendment passes. Okay, colleagues, there's no more amendments. So now we're on comments, and I'm going to leave the vice speaker to be last because she's got to close and then identify the motion to Senator Teller.
Can I have a point of information, sir, on a clarification? Just on what was said by the previous speakers? I'm talking about the downsizing. It wasn't about the shrine. It was about the acreage of the land from five to 14, whatever the discussions were two days ago. So I just wanted to make sure that that clarification was in the book.
Yeah, okay. So does anyone like to comment on the bill otherwise? I'm going to ask the author of the bill to close so we can move along. And then we can recess for nourishment. Nobody's... Madam Vice Speaker, if you can close, and then we wrap this bill up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, Mr. Chair, unfortunately, it must take some time to first address some of the rhetoric that has been used during discussions on Bill 264. And I say it's unfortunate because it has called into question the very good intentions of this project to finally let thousands of our ancestors rest. But as happened too often in this hall, the simplest, Mr. Chair, the simplest of bills, the noblest of intentions, get muddied, soiled with indwendo and conspiracy theories and character assassinations. For the record, Mr. Chair, this is a simple appropriation bill. That's all. The question of what this project is supposed to be was settled by this body more than 30 years ago. Bill 267 did not invent the mandate to build a shrine. The question of where the shrine is supposed to be built was settled by this body just about eight years ago. Bill 267 does not determine what property to use. It does not limit its selection to a village or lot or how the lot must be drawn up. It is that old law, not this bill, that requires the site include a large coral formation known as the Rock. It is that old law that also says the shrine must share a border with Saginaw-Toura, not Bill 267. In fact, Mr. Chair, one of the things that caused so much commotion yesterday was the explanation of why nine acres of buffers were added to the blueprint was initiated around 2020, which means that the amount of land used as a buffer and the shape of the lot to accommodate the requirements of the 2016 law that imposed mandates on the site has been available to all of us in the government and the public for at least four years. So while I never want to question the motives of any of my colleagues on this August floor, Mr. Chair, I do want to assure our people that the location, size, and shape of this lot has never been related to any hospital project. It was drawn based on a law this body passed eight years ago. And I know one of my previous speakers from Aganiah to Mooning spoke about it. Any assertions or illusions or insinuations to the contrary is ignorant guesswork at best and at worst is a shameless deception to score cheap political points. But all the regrettable rhetoric from today and yesterday aside, I hope that we can, as a body, have disproved any notion that this bill was related to any conspiracy to grab land or to limit the footprint available to further develop Epa Point. That is why I had no objection to an amendment that would essentially approve the original project map submitted by the late Andy Leguanyia to this body. And again, thank him for all the work that he's done. God bless his soul. I certainly pray that all the opposition to this measure that was conditioned on the size of this lot have now been converted to support for this bill. Again, Mr. Chair, this bill is simple. It appropriates $5 million to the Naftan Manaynata Shrine. That's all. But even this simple appropriation must be considered with a balance of budgetary needs in mind. I recognize that there are competing priorities for our finite government revenue, and I certainly don't want to devalue the good intentions behind the other bills that are tapping into the excess revenue we are collecting this fiscal year. But when we are discussing the inhumane and undignified treatment of our ancestors' remains and injustice that must be corrected, the question before the body is, shall we act now or later? Because the cold-hearted truth is that our ancestors, the people who gifted us with indigenous knowledge, who blessed us with their genes, who acted as stewards of the island we inherited, many of them, Mr. Chair, are piled in shoeboxes shoved in a storage closet. To make this status quo absolutely clear, we are talking about thousands of people who died thousands of years ago. Many dug up more than 100 years ago and placed in the care of Gov Guam more than 30 years ago. And this is unacceptable, isn't it? Would we wait this long if our nanas and tatas are in that shoebox? Would we be silent for decades happily allowing the bones of great-grandparents to be unearthed and unburied? To me, Mr. Chair, the answer is clear. Our government has taken too long to make good on this promise to affirm a cultural value, to reflect the spirits of reciprocity and interdependence that has led our people through genocide and plagues, wars, and occupations. Colleagues, I understand that there are many other ways we could spend $5 million, and I won't try to convince anyone, not one of my colleague senators and not one person watching this session, that their priority is less important than this one. When we have schools that need repair, when crime continues to take too many lives, when there's the need to build a new hospital looming over, it would be heartless for me to suggest otherwise. But I also ask for this small consideration. There will always be another priority that would divert funding away from a project like our Naftan Manaynata Shrine. You don't have to take my word for it. Just take a look at the history. It's been more than 30 years since this very body enacted the mandate for this shrine to be built. It has been eight years since this body dedicated property for the memorial site, almost perfectly situated in a place of historic significance, looking out into the same waters that these ancestors of ours did, thousands and thousands of our people. The people who have been boxed and stored like inventory in a forum mall, these people, my dear colleagues, they have been waiting long enough. We can honor their contribution, which is indeed our very existence, by choosing them today. And while we say so often, we may overlook its powerful meaning. Sina maasi, Mr. Chair. May our ancestors continue to bless and guide us all. Before I ask this to be put into the third reading, I promised the good senator from Aganiah, Senator Duennas, to be a part of the co-sponsorship. I also open it to all the rest of my colleagues besides you, Mr. Chair. Senator Siniklis, if anybody is, can they just tell me right now if they want to be a part of this bill? I would offer that amendment for sponsorship, sir.
Oh, there are no objections?
Chris Duennas and then everybody else.
Yeah, then everybody else. Okay. If there's no objection to that?
No objection.
Okay.
And I'm motion to move this to the third reading voting file.
Thank you. And any objection?
And then to report out of the committee after...
After we're all done?
Yes.
We got one more bill this afternoon.
Mr. Chair, can I just do a point of information? So we came in here, yes, on an appropriations measure that was tied to an existing law and in the process of discussing it in the committee of the whole. We found out that there was a new map that totally deviated from what was allowed in the law. So I believe the reaction of the members who questioned that, who criticized that, was wholly appropriate, Mr. Chair. And I just wanted to put that information on the record. I don't necessarily agree with the way the chain of events of the last couple of days was explained by the retiring speaker. So again, I just want to reiterate that
Is that a personal privilege or sad information?
That we came in here on an appropriations measure that was tied to an existing law on the books, and then we found out that there was a map that existed in a wholly different universe. And so that's just the point of information I wanted to make, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you.
Sidoos Masi.
There's a motion to Senator Teller.
No objection.
You're good? No objection?
No objection.
Okay.
Motion starts.
Motion passed. Folks, we come back at 2:30, and we continue on and commit the whole on Bill 296, that's 37. No, by that time, you should be here, at 2:30. Thank you. That'll be the last one. Thank you. Thank you. That'll be the last one. Thank you.